Good afternoon. This cyber meeting is being held in person here in council chambers and electronically in accordance with section 238 subsection 3.3 of the municipal act and section 16.6.24 of the city of Woodstock procedure by law. This meeting is being live streamed to the city's YouTube channel and a recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors attending virtually will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion requesting to speak and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If the councillor attending virtually needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerks. We have no closed session today. And are there any disclosure conflict of interest? Hearing none. Disclosure of new business? Hearing none. Matters arising from the minutes? Minutes? Call on councillor Peter.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Schattenberg at the minutes. The regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on May 5, 2022 be adopted.
The additions to the agenda, councillor Peter.
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Schattenberg. Would the following items be added to the agenda? Delegation item 8C Mark Burke, B21-63-8, A21-15-8, B21-64-8, A21-16-8 and B21-65-8, A21-17-8, Application for Consent in Minor Variants. Delegation item 8D Richie Connor and Nav Bertie Arnar Designs, B22-04-8, Application for Consent in Minor Variants. Correspondence. Item 10D Leslie Rand, Alzheimer's Director of Development, In-Kind Donation Request and Department Report, Item 14F1 Rescheduling Meeting Time Committee of Adjustment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. There's no delegations and no presentations answered. And the delegations today, the first one is Christine Scrimager with the Scrimager and Company 2021 Consolidated Financial Statements. And she's attending virtually. Go ahead Christine.
All right. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
We can you see the financial statements? So I just want to make sure.
We can't see your screen as far as sharing. I can just we can just see you.
Okay. There. Is that good? You see the financial statements now?
No, not yet Christine.
Sorry. Are they there now?
No, not yet.
Chris, I'm going to need your help because it says it looks like it's on from my standpoint.
You just need to, there you go.
Thank you. All right. Sorry about that. So these are the draft audited financial statements for the year end at December 31, 2021 for the city of Woodstock. They are consolidated, which means it includes all the boards and committees of the city. This is my audit opinion, so it is an independent auditor's report and it is what we call a clean opinion, meaning that I did not find anything materially incorrect in the financial statements. At this time, I'd like to thank the treasurer, Diane Campbell, for all of her help and her staff's help. As you can see, this is a we've done this virtually, a lot of this audit and takes a lot of coordination from your staff. And so we just really appreciate that. It is dated as of today's sorry, today's date, which is the date hopefully those charged with governance under the community auditing standards will approve it being counsel. So moving forward to the next statement, which is your statement of financial position. So this is your balance sheet and shows all of the financial assets and liabilities coming down and then the non-financial assets. So as with each year, the line that I really a couple of things I look at when I look at municipalities where they're at from a financial position position. You can see here that net financial assets, so that would be the amount of money you would have in the bank if everybody paid you what they owe you and you paid off all of your liabilities. And you can see we've had about a $2 million increase from the prior year. So trending obviously in the right direction. Everything below that line of your capital assets mainly that you obviously can't sell or you would not be able to provide the service you provide. And so those we want to see those tangible capital assets being replaced at a value at least equal to the amortization or remind council that the amortization is just that writing off of the assets over the life of their usefulness. And you can see we had 210 million at the end of 2020, moving forward to 215 million. So even after amortization, we had a $5 million increase in overall assets. And we did that by a couple of by a couple of things that are good news to council. One is that we issued only about $1.3 million of new debt and our repayments were actually more than that. So our net debt, this net long-term liabilities line has actually gone down by about 600,000. So we replace that level of assets of about close to 15 million by not depleting our reserves. When we get to the reserve documentation to further in the notes, you'll see that our reserves are about the same as they were at the end of 2020. And that we've also not incurred great amounts of debt. So we've been able to do that. So that's all good news to the city coming down to an accumulated surplus at the end of the year, 185 million. And you can see that 223 million of that is in your capital assets. Moving forward to the next statement, which is the statement of operations and accumulated surplus. Have a couple of comments here under revenue. So this is the three columns, the budget that was approved by council for 2021, the actual for 2021, and then compared to the actual for the previous year. And a couple of comments and the revenue decrease from budget that really falls under two lines mainly, one is the taxation revenue, which is the, as you're aware, there was the property reassessments on some automotive properties that took place and got finalized in 2021. So this has been reflected in this taxation revenue number. And then under other, within that other category are things like land sales and some other donations, those kinds of revenues, which are very difficult to budget on any given year and fluctuate somewhat. So really that other line, the main decrease there is really just the level of land sales, which we hope will be increased in this coming year and years to come. So that's my comments on revenue under expenditures. So I'll remind council that when we do our, when the city council does their budget, they don't include amortization. And I talked about amortization on the balance sheet. It's that using up of capital assets. And but in the actual columns, there is amortization. And so the amortization for the year was just over $10 million. And so you can see that's really the difference between overall between your budget expenditures of 65 million and your actual expenditures of 75 million. Coming down to that excess of revenue over expenditures, you can see at the end of last year, there was a $1 million deficit in operations this year, there's a $1 million surplus. And so that really ties into that increase of about $2 million on the previous statement. The values underneath that line, the other are items that relate to capital and are therefore not included in operations because they fluctuate obviously from year to year. Government transfers are just that, the government grants that we are able to recognize. The main difference there was just because of supply chain and getting and getting projects off the ground as councils aware, not all projects were completed. And so we, we did not earn all of the government grants or the DCs that we could bring into income. That donated capital line, that 3,3,602, when the city assumes any assets being mainly subdivisions, we then assume those services that the developer put into that subdivision and we then show them now as our capital assets because we are responsible for maintaining those assets in the future. And we show a donated capital revenue here in order to get them into our financial statement because the developer has in fact donated those assets, he's paid for them, we now have to maintain them. Coming down to excess of revenue over expenditures of $8 million this year versus 3.4 million last year. And really that the couple increases there is, is that donation of assets as well as just continuing to grow in our revenues and our expenditures were about a million three under budget this year. Any questions at all on that? I sort of went through it fairly quickly, but hopefully I've highlighted the main points.
Are there any questions through to Christine?
I'll continue through the rest of the statements then. The next statement is your consolidated statement of cash flow. So this just shows the increases and decreases of the non-cash items on the balance sheet. I won't spend a lot of time on this one, but I would like to look at the next financial statement, which is the changes in net financial assets. So this is really where you see, so that amortization I mentioned was just over $10 million. And then we acquired new assets of 16,212,012. So significant increase in assets. So that's that $5 million fluctuation that I mentioned before. And then we get to the notes to the financial statements. These are notes that you'll see in all municipal financial statements. And I just highlight a couple of these notes for your, our council's perusal. Sorry. So I'll remind council that in addition to all the revenue that we just saw in that financial statement, city staff are responsible for almost $40 million of revenue. In addition to that, that is not reflected in those statements for both the county and the school boards that they are responsible for collecting and then remitting to those bodies. This is your long-term debt note. So again, the decrease from last year. So overall, we've had a decrease in the debt level of the city. And then this is probably the note that you're most interested in. So this is the breakdown of that accumulated surplus that I mentioned on the balance sheet. So the actual operating surplus for the city was 3.1 million. And I know that the treasurer has given you a report on that. And then we have the invested intangible capital assets, which obviously is the majority of the surplus. That post-retirement benefit amount, that is the amount that we will eventually have to pay out in post-retirement benefits to the employees as they stand today. You'll see there's a bit of a decrease there and that's mainly because of just the actual retirements that have taken place over the last year. And then below that line are your reserves and reserve funds. And as I mentioned, when I went through the balance sheet, in total, we've stayed fairly consistent to last year between the, if you add the reserves and reserve funds together, and that's even after we've added all of that new cap. Note 11 is just your, if the money comes in from the gaming revenue, then that will pay off that commitment to the hospital this year that we're in currently. And then really don't have any other comments here for the last few notes. There's two schedules at the back of the financial statements. One is the breakdown of the capital assets, or it's on an angle here, but breakdown of the capital assets by components. And I know that you have that in your package. And then the last one is where we break down the revenues and expenditures by function, which is what the FIR does. And so this ties this financial statement into the FIR that is submitted on the city's behalf. In your package, you also have the trust funds. I won't go through them page by page. I don't have much to comment on there other than I know that the treasurer is currently looking into any, any trust funds and making sure that the items that are eligible to be spent from those trust funds are financed from them. So all in all, that's my report for the 2021 year end. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions through to Christine? Thank you Christine. It seems that you're, you're such a great report here. And as always, there's no question. So you again for this and we all appreciate this well-written report for us. So thank you.
All right. Be well, everyone. Good afternoon.
So our next person is I'll call on Carl Harris. And he's going to speak to us today about community free table concerns with loitering.
No barking state council. Good afternoon, anybody. I'm back again. So we had a lot of worrying problems in the city, but quality problems in our city. And you know, a lot of people cause problems with our table. You know, anybody in the city would like to talk to me, that's it. If you think Daisy. Daisy, okay, this is your count. And we know that we are, we're okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Carl.
You take questions? Questions?
Any questions?
Question please? Any questions?
Any questions from anyone or comments?
Yeah.
Thank you Carl for coming forward. Our next presentation is from Mr. Mark Burke. Would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you again, just mostly here to answer any questions. I did forward some photos from the, some comments and I was really happy to see Ms. Gonye and Mr. Kitchen have a chance to come and actually exercise democracy. It's nice that we actually let people speak municipal politics. So it's wonderful. Thank you. So I forwarded those photos just to give maybe a real time update on, to give you a better view of what's actually happening on site on 62 Clark. And just here to answer any questions, but just a lovely property, there's a good 100 feet of yard between the, the actual new homes and, and the rear properties that Ms. Gonye was referring to. So confident we were able to save two very large trees, which is, which is wonderful. And one smaller and one other tree did have to come down because they were in a sense overlapping the building envelope. But, but overall, I think we have some really nice properties there. And, and also just if you reflect back that the, the original property that home that was there was already in a very similar location with a large outbuilding that was housing raccoons and skunks. So I think, I think overall, we've actually achieved kind of a nice upgrade for the neighborhood and, and also made some room for two additional families. So I think that's going to be a net benefit. And, and really, of course, change is always a little bit painful and brings some anxiety for neighbors. But overall, when this is all done, I think we'll see that it really is a nice addition or a nice improvement to the neighborhood and also achieves our overall objectives of increasing some housing for, for some, some, some families. So just here to answer any questions on the additional information around the trees and the, the nature of the property.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Burke? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our next presentation is from Richie Connor and Nate Bertie Arnar Designs on B22-04-8, Application for Consent in Minor Variance. And these people are attending virtually. Go ahead gentlemen.
I'm here from Arnar Designs, myself Nav. Pleasure to meet you all. Thank you for the great presentation so far. We've submitted the drawings for, for the project already. Essentially here, if anybody has any questions on the severance of the law, I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this application at this point? Thank you. And we'll move on and we'll hear the, the planning report soon. So thank you very much. We'll go back to the motions for the delegations. The first one, could I have a motion on the, the state financial statement, please? Councillor Calpitt.
Thank you. I'll move that the draft 2021 Consolidated Financial Statements for the city of Woodstock and Trust Funds as prepared by Scrimager and Company CPA Professional Corporation with attached independent auditor's report dated May 19, 2022 be approved. And further, that Woodstock City Council accepts the statement of independence to management or persons having oversight responsibility for the financial reporting process with respect to the corporation of the city of Woodstock within the meaning of the rules of professional conduct of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of Ontario as of May 19, 2022 by Scrimager and Company.
And councillor Accione seconds that motion. Are there any comments or questions on this, on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote on this. All in favor? Thank you. That's a pass. The next one is on our list is for Carl Harris. Or could I have a motion on this councillor Accione?
Thank you. Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council received the presentation from Carl Harrison information. That's good to see him.
Councillor Calpitt, it's second that motion. All in favor? Thank you. And thank you Carl for attending. And the next resolution, Mr. Burke's resolution, we do not need a vote on that one. And then the, the also the next one is Richie Connor and Nate Bertie. We do not need a vote on that one. We'll be hearing the planning application. So now I'm call, I'll call on Heather St. Clair to present the first application. But first of all, I need a motion on this planning item. So could I have councillor Schattenberg?
That Woodstock City Council advised the Land Division Committee that the city supports the proposal to sever the subject property, subject to the following conditions that are noted in the agenda. And there's eight of the conditions altogether.
Yes. Could I have a second please councillor Better? Go ahead, Miss St. Clair. Just need to do one. Some Schadenberg.
Yeah, I believe the motion also should be in further that the city of Woodstock recommend approval of minor variance applications, A21-15-8, A21-16-8 and A21-17-8 submitted by Trubill Construction, Inc. for lands described as part lot 14, Plan 174 in the city of Woodstock as it relates to relief from section 7.2, Table 7.2, zone provisions to reduce the minimum lot frontage for the severed and retained lots resulting from consent files, B21-63-8, B21-64-8, B21-65-8 from nine meters to 7.1 meters.
Go ahead, send.
Just through the chair, does he not have to? I mean, he only read the first one. Does he not have to do B21-64-8 and the nine conditions for that one? B21-65-8 and the nine conditions for that one as well? They're like, it's three separate. They don't all fall into nine.
Yes.
You just have to do the, you did the first one, Mark. So you have to do B21-64-8 and the nine.
Yeah, B21-63-8 with eight conditions, B21-64-8 with nine conditions attached and B21-65-8 also with the nine conditions attached.
Okay, go ahead. All right. Good afternoon, council. Would you like me to pull up the mapping material for this application? Yes. All right. So the first application that is on the agenda today for council's consideration is a consent application, which proposes the creation of three new residential lots and the retention of a lot for the purpose of constructing two new semi-detached dwelling houses for a total of four dwelling units total on the property to, to facilitate the creation of these lots so that those units can be separately conveyable. The subject lands are located on the east side of Clark Street North. I don't know if council can see that map, but this is on the staff report. And the subject lands are located between Nellis Street and Warwick Street and currently contain an existing semi-detached dwelling house with two residential units that's under construction, which are located on the southern portion of the lot in accordance with the proposed lot lines. And it is proposed that a second semi-detached dwelling house would be constructed on the northern portion of the property. And it is proposed that each lot would be approximately 5,000 square feet in size. And a minor variance has also been sought to reduce the minimum lot frontage for the R2 zone from nine meters to 7.1 meters to facilitate the proposed severance. Land uses within the immediate area are predominantly comprised of a mix of low-density residential dwelling types consisting of single detached and semi-detached dwellings as well as the Woodstock fairgrounds, which are located to the west. Planning staff have reviewed the proposal under the policy direction of the provincial policy statement and are generally satisfied that the proposal is consistent with these policy directions as the proposal will promote intensification and will facilitate the severance of new residential land uses that will efficiently utilize the subject lands in the available municipal infrastructure within the area. Staff are also satisfied the proposal is consistent with the direction of the official plan. Specifically, the property is located within a broader area that's characterized by a mix of residential land uses and lot sizes. And the severance of the semi-detached dwelling units is not anticipated to impact the existing character of the area. Further to this, staff are satisfied that the proposal will not have a negative impact on surrounding land uses as the development is generally small in scale and will be able to accommodate all necessary off-street parking on each property. The application has been circulated to public agencies. No comments of concern were received, but the city engineering division did comment that they, while they are satisfied with the proposed grading plan, more detail would be required. more detail would be required at the time of building permit stage. And further, that if approved, a three-meter road widening would be required along the frontage of Clark Street. The City Parks Department commented that there is a number of large trees on the property, and any new construction should take the preservation of these trees into account. Two neighboring property owners spoke in opposition to the proposal at the planning meeting earlier this week, mainly citing concerns with respect to traffic, the removal of any existing trees, and the over-intensification on the site. But overall, planning staff are satisfied that the proposal is consistent with the policy direction of the provincial policy statement and the county's official plan and can be given favorable consideration subject to the list of conditions that are outlined in the the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions in this application? Through to the planner? Hearing none. I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's passed. Unanimous. The next application is Z N eight twenty-one dash twenty-seven, application for zone change, two seven three three one five three Ontario, Inc., thirty-three Light Street. Go ahead, Miss Sinclair.
Thank you.
Oh, first, I need the motion, sorry. The Counselor Accione, could I have the motion, please?
Yeah, move by myself. The Woodstock City Council approved the application for lands described as part lot for WS Light Street in the City of Woodstock to amend the provision of the Entrepreneurial District Zone C three-two to facilitate the addition of one residential unit on the subject lands. And further, that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
I could have the second is Counselor T. Go ahead.
Thank you. So as stated, this application for zone change has been requested to amend the current site-specific provisions of the Special Entrepreneurial District Zone, Zone C three dash two, to allow the number of residential dwelling units permitted within the existing converted dwelling to be increased from three to four dwelling units, which would increase the total number of residential dwelling units on the property from eight to nine as the existing structure on the property currently holds or is comprised of five dwelling units adjacent to Light Street. The subject lands are located on the west side of Light Street, lying between Dundas Street and Hunter Street, and currently contain the two separate converted dwellings, which again hold the current total of eight residential dwelling units. The property is approximately eleven thousand square feet in size and have direct frontage onto Light Street via an existing shared laneway, which is shared with the property to the immediate north. Surrounding land uses are a mix of commercial, office, and multi-residential and institutional development. And the lands to the immediate south are used as a public parking lot operated by the city. Planning staff are satisfied that the proposal maintains the policy direction of the PPS and the official plan. The subject lands are designated as Central Business District in the official plan, which promotes multi-use residential development, including converted dwellings as a means of encouraging medium-density and high-density residential development in the downtown core. Planning staff are of the opinion that the proposed zone change maintains the intent of the official plan with respect to promoting the planned function of the Central Business District as it will result in additional residential medium housing doubt, medium-density housing options that are affordable to a broader range of residents. Further, staff are satisfied that the zone change is consistent with the policies of the PPS regarding intensification as as well as the efficient use of municipal infrastructure and public service facilities and will assist in providing for additional residential housing options for the local community. With respect to the zone change, the proposed zoning bylaw will amend the special provisions of the C three dash two zone to permit up to four residential units. And there are no special parking or yard provisions required to facilitate the proposal beyond those currently contained in the C three dash two zoning. And no new development is proposed for the subject lands beyond interior renovations. Subject property does contain five parking spaces, and it's the opinion of staff that these spaces be maintained, which will not affect the ability of the applicant to convert the proposed additional space into a new residential unit. No concerns were received from any of the public agencies or neighboring property owners circulated. And overall, planning staff are supportive of the application, and a bylaw has been prepared for council's consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments through to the planner? Hearing none, I'll call vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. The next application is B twenty-two dash oh four dash eight, an application for consent and minor variance at sixty-eight Cedar Street. Go ahead. Motion, Counselor, Counselor Red Tate, please.
I'll move the motion that Woodstock City Council advised the Land Division Committee that the city supports the proposal to sever the subject property subject to the following nine conditions.
Could I have a second on that, please? Counselor Accione. Thank you. Go ahead, Miss Empire.
Okay, so the next application, which was the delegation we heard from from Nav earlier, proposes the creation of one new residential building lot and the retention of a lot containing an existing single-detached dwelling. Specifically, it's proposed that the severed lot will be approximately sixty-three hundred square feet in size with a frontage of fifty feet on Cedar Street and a depth of one hundred and twenty-three feet. While the lot to be retained will be approximately six thousand square feet in size, again with fifty feet of frontage on Cedar Street and a depth of one hundred and fifteen feet. The lot to be severed does contain a small garden shed, which would be removed as a condition of consent. And the applicant has indicated their intent to construct a new single-detached dwelling on the lot to be severed. The properties located on the west side of Cedar Street, north of Walter Street, and surrounding land uses in the immediate area are predominantly comprised of single-detached dwellings on the west side of Cedar Street with a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional on the east side of the street. With respect to the provincial policy statement, staff are satisfied that the proposal is consistent with those policies with respect to intensification, redevelopment, and housing policies as the application will result in residential intensification and the efficient use of existing municipal services and infrastructure. With respect to the official plan, the property is designated as low-density development residential, and staff are satisfied that the proposal is in keeping with this policy direction. Specifically, the proposed lots are consistent with other lots in the area as they appear to be similarly sized with respect to frontage and area. And staff are also satisfied that they would be sufficiently sized to accommodate for appropriate building setbacks, parking, and vehicular access. With respect to agency circulation, the City Engineering Department did comment that municipal water and sanitary sewer appears to be located within an easement in the front yard of the property. And that in the past, the city has received drainage complaints from residents in the area about ponding water in the rear yards, and therefore, the applicant has been advised that stormwater management would be implemented into the grading plan for the proposed dwelling construction, which would be reflected in an associated severance agreement. The City Parks Department indicated that there are two city-owned trees in the boulevard that would need to be surveyed to confirm ownership and that there are also three privately-owned trees that are shown on the drawing to be removed. The city would require compensation in the form of planting back on the site at a rate of three to one and a plan showing locations and species of trees required for this compensation. The County of Oxford Public Works Department did request an easement along the frontage of Cedar Street to reflect the location of the existing infrastructure. But overall, planning staff are satisfied that the proposal is consistent with policy direction of the provincial policy statement and the county's official plan. No comments of concern were received from any of the neighboring property owners that we are aware of, and staff are recommending in support of the proposal.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to Miss Sinclair on this application? Seeing none, I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. The next application is Z N eight twenty-two dash oh three, application for for zone change, seven twenty-nine Hounspill Street. Counselor Calpitt, go ahead with motion.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the application for lands described as part lot six, WS Chapel Street, Plan nineteen, and the City of Woodstock rezone the subject property from Special Local Commercial Zone C one three to Special Residential Zone two, R two thirty-seven, to facilitate the conversion of the existing multi-use building to a duplex dwelling house. And further than any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. Could I have a second there on that motion, please? Counselor Pedder? Thank you. Go ahead, Miss Claire.
Thank you. So as stated, this application for zone change proposes to rezone the subject lands to facilitate the conversion of an existing multiple-use building, which consists of a main floor laundromat and a second-floor residential dwelling unit into a duplex building. And no new development is proposed for the subject lands beyond interior renovations. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Hounspill Street and Chapel Street and is approximately thirty-one hundred square feet in size and contains the existing multi-use building as well as four parking spaces, face spaces accessed by two existing driveways, one off Hounspill Street and one off Chapel Street. And surrounding land uses are mainly comprised of a mix of low-density residential dwelling types. Planning staff are of the opinion that the proposed development does promote intensification and will facilitate a mix of housing types to assist in satisfying the need for local residential housing options. The development is also considered to be an efficient use of municipal services and infrastructure within the city. The property is designated as medium-density residential in the official plan, which is intended for the development of low-profile, multiple-unit development that exceeds the density targets of the low-density residential designation. Planning staff are of the opinion that the proposed conversion to the existing multiple-use building will maintain the intent of the medium-density residential designation as the proposed duplex will maintain the existing character of the neighborhood with respect to height, bulk, scale, and setbacks, and is not anticipated to negatively impact adjacent residential uses. The applicants have indicated that the existing structure on the property was constructed in approximately nineteen forty, and it's noted that relief is required to recognize the existing lot area, frontage, and depth of the subject lands, as well as the front, rear, and exterior side yard setbacks to the existing building as they apply to the R two zone, zone provisions, which are intended to sure ensure that lots are sufficiently sized to provide for adequate building envelopes. And to this end, planning staff are satisfied that the approval of the applicant's request is appropriate as the proposed conversion to the main floor commercial use will result in the efficient reuse of the existing building. And based on the applicant's site sketch, sufficient parking is currently available to serve the needs of the two dwelling units, which would require four spaces. And the City Building Department has confirmed this. Further, staff are satisfied that the requested development would be considered compatible with surrounding residential land uses. And with respect to agency comments, the City Parks Department did comment that there is a Norway, a city-owned Norway maple tree on the boulevard of Chapel Street with, which is regulated under the city's bylaw. And if additional parking is required, the tree would need to be protected. No comments of concern were received from any of the neighboring property owners. And overall, planning staff are satisfied that the proposal maintains the intent of the official plan and the county's, or the provincial policy statement in the county's official plan and are supportive of the proposal, and a bylaw has been prepared for council's consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to the planner? Thank you. I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. And thank you for you. Thank you for your plan. The next is our consideration of correspondence, and the first one is Counselor Accione has requested the following correspondence be added to the agenda. A letter from the Town of South Bruce Peninsula regarding the new home tax rebate program. Go ahead, Counselor Accione.
Thank you through the chair that I moved that Woodstock City Council support the resolution received from the Town of South Bruce Peninsula, requesting that the Government of Canada review its new home tax rebate program and consider implementing its rebate program in the same manner as that of Ontario, or increase its new home purchasing threshold to an amount significantly higher than the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is reflective of today's housing market. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. And further, that this resolution be circulated to the Town of South Bruce Peninsula, the Honorable Justin Trudeau, Prime Minister of Canada, and the Honorable Dave Mackenzie, Oxford MP. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that motion, please? Counselor Schattenberg? Counselor Accione, would you like to speak to them?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I'm pleased that the new home tax rebate program exists and applaud the government's commitment to assisting new home buyers. After reviewing the program, I'd like to move that we respectfully request that the federal government reconsideres their portion of the program. I'm encouraged by the Province of Ontario's program and would like to see the federal government either mirror the rebate program or implement by the Province of Ontario or alternately increase the purchasing threshold to an amount which is greater than the four fifty, as mentioned. In today's housing market, the instances of new houses being purchased for anything under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is so rare that I think this is kind of mandatory thinking of our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions through to Counselor Accione regarding this request? Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. The next one is Janet Thompson, volunteer coordinator for kids do-a-thon, request to place signs. Could I have a motion on that, please? Counselor Pedder, and second by Counselor Tate. Go ahead, Counselor Pedder.
I move that Woodstock City Council approve the request to place signs at the locations indicated in the correspondence to promote the kids do-a-thon do-a-thon on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Are there any comments on this request? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. The next one is Tanya Patch, Communications Lead Relay for the Life, Relay for Life, twenty twenty-two Committee in-kind donation request. Could I have a motion on that, please? Counselor Schattenberg, and second, Counselor Tate. Go ahead.
Now, Woodstock City Council approve the in-kind donation request from the Relay for Life for their event on June eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Are there any comments on Counselor Schattenberg, please?
Just want to mention that it's nice to see the Relay for Life for the Canadian Cancer Society is going back in person, myself, and even our acting mayor Connie Lauder have both volunteered that program for many, many years. I was on the committee for it for a number of years. I just have one kind of question. Maybe it's a concern, but it's sort of a question. Maybe it goes to the Parks and Recreation Department. When it comes to supplying the the stage, it can certainly be built with a minimum supervision because I've built it before, but is there any difficulty with building the stage by the City of Woodstock supplying employees to sort of get it there and get it built and get it back to city premises?
Mr. Connors?
Through to Acting Mayor Connie Lauder, through to the counselor's question. The stage won't be a problem. Staff will be able to be there to do setup and takedown of the stage. So that won't be an issue. The where we might, well, where we're going to run into some trouble is the picnic tables. We were are gonna have to use some older picnic tables just because the ones that we have currently are going to be in use in our parks. The other piece is there was a request to have this come in on the Saturday and be taken away on the Sunday. On the Saturday and be taken away on the Sunday. We really don't have staff. We would have to schedule a lot of. Overtime, unscheduled overtime for this work, so we would like to work with the group to see if we could do this. On a Friday and pick up for Monday, so hopefully that will work out. That should save the city quite a quite a bit of money.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or anything else, Mr. Schaden? Thank you. Any any other questions regarding? This request? Thank you. Hearing none. I'll call the vote on this. All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. And the next request is Leslie Rand, Alzheimer's Society Director of Development in Kind Donation Request. Could I have a motion? Counselor Atchioni and a seconder. Counselor Tate, go ahead.
And move on myself. The Woodstock City Council approve. The in-kind donation request to use the city's portable stage for the annual Walk for Alzheimer fundraiser event on May twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, and I would guess that would be the same as Mr. Connors has spoken to regarding the stage. Are there any comments on this? Thank you, I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. We don't have staff for presentations, no mayor's report, no counselor's report, so the next. One is the department reports administrative services. Could I have a motion on that? Statement of revenue and expenditure and statement of capital expenditures for the period ending April the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Counselor Tate.
A motion to receive his information.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please? Counselor Atchioni? Thank you. Are there any questions on this report? Thank you, I'll call the the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. The next report is the engineering report at four seventy-four, four seventy-six Dundas Street demolition. Counselor Talbot.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorizes an increase of one hundred and thirty-two thousand for four seventy-four, four seventy-six Dundas Street demolition. To be funded from the reserve for capital projects and notices hereby given that the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-seven capital budget is amended accordingly.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that? Counselor Tate? Are there any comments or do we want to hear from Mr. Maggior on this request? Go ahead, Mr. Dahan.
Your worship, yes, this is for the demolition of the. Two buildings that the city purchased a number of years ago. They've been vacant for a little while and as you know, we're also. Working on some revitalization plans for downtown area which include. Well, basically, we are assuming that these two buildings will be removed by that point in time. Unfortunately, the 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 original budget amount that was carried over from a year or two ago. Was not sufficient to when we actually put the tenders out to cover the prices that we actually received, so that's why we're asking for the additional funds. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to? But that started out with Mr. Maggior, so that's why I went to him first, sorry. Okay, I'll call the vote on that. All in favor of this? Thank you, that's unanimous. There's nothing from Cultural Services, nothing from Parks and Rec. Nothing from the economic development. And the clerks are rescheduling meeting time committee of adjustment. Could I have a motion on this app or this? This request? Counselor Tate?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council schedule both committee of adjustment and public planning meetings at seven o'clock PM.
Could I have a second on this, please? We don't. Counselor Pedder? Is there any discussion on this motion? Counselor Talbot?
I'd like to move an amendment to the motion. The meetings be at six PM. Well, not the planning, sorry, the committee of adjustment start at six and then planning still remain at seven and then I can speak to the amendment.
Acting Mayor Lauder through to Counselor Talbot, the current motion that council has approved is for a six PM start time for committee of adjustment. So if that's the route that council would like to take, then no action is required.
Thank you, and I'll withdraw the the change then, and then I'll speak to the motion as presented if I can, unless Counselor Tate would like to.
Go ahead, Counselor Talbot.
Okay, just many years of experience with committee of adjustment and planning meetings. If we don't start planning at seven. We have a lot of opportunity where we have very big applications and a lot of public attendance and our meetings can go two and three hours. So if we have committee of adjustment starting at seven, who also has a lot of applications. And if they coincide on two very heavy agendas. We could be here till one or two in the morning looking at committee of adjustment and planning, so at least if they start at six. That gives them an hour head start and we can follow at seven. It. It just becomes. Too crowded, like it's just too much to try to do starting at seven the evening. I mean, unless you want to stay here all night, which we can, I guess, but. I'm not sure the public would appreciate that.
Counselor Pedder?
Through the chair, I was here during the. Committee of Adjustment Meeting on Monday and they had quite a lot of discussion on this back and forth. They had two or three motions as well. That were tied and defeated and. So if I'm getting this straight right now. Both meetings are at six o'clock? No. The committee of adjustments is six and and our planning is at seven. And I'm sure that's how we want to leave it, even though I seconded this motion, I didn't really want to. But they were they were adamant that they wanted to go at seven or five. And not at six, so I just wanted. The other counselors to know what happened during the meeting on Monday. But yes, I'm quite happy with the sixth.
Counselor Talbot?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Lauder, just kind of comment. If they prefer to have them at five, I've got no issue with that. I'm not sure how that works out for staff, though, I mean, because we we have to bring in all of our staff. And then so if they only were to have one application, that would mean staff would either have to. Sit around and wait until planning started or the six and seven. And I mean, it's not always going to work. We're not going to be able to start planning at seven some nights because committee of adjustment will fall over into that, but at least. That means that staff only have to make one trip out, especially, you know, in the wintertime and stuff if they're depending on what it is. It just it's better to have them coincide and not have a two-hour split and one hour one isn't so bad to make up for time if it's not busy.
There any other comments on this? Last our deputy clerk, would you like to speak to this maybe at the outcome of the meeting the other night?
For your chair to Counselor Talbot, the reason we recommended we start the meeting at six PM was because. With COVID restrictions being lifted, a lot of people are going back to work and they wouldn't have a lot of time between. Leaving their workplace and coming to council chambers if the meeting were to start at five o'clock, so.
If I can. Acting Mayor Lauder, but that it's already been going on now at six o'clock for how long? It's been going on for quite some time at six, has it not?
Through the chair to Counselor Talbot, no, we actually just had one meeting at six PM, which was last week. But before that, it was five PM because we did things virtually. And it was easier to participate from wherever you were.
Okay, so then going back, what would staff prefer? What what makes it better for staff? Is a five o'clock meeting better? And then you can always ask planning or ask. Go back to committee of adjustment that this motion is turned down. Because I think it needs to be compatible for both. I mean. When the people applied for committee of adjustment. They knew when time the meeting started, I'm assuming. It was at seven back then, so I'm still thinking six is the better choice.
Counselor Tate?
Just through your worship, just to the. Comments, I think the concern isn't with staff because I don't think that's. The CAO always said to me, that's not should not should be our concern is staff. I think the concern is the public. And I don't think it was the committee of, I think they're concerned the public can't get here in time. I think that's the major concern. Yeah, six is still better than five, but I think that was the issue was the public, not the staff or the committee.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this? So.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Lauder, just for a bit of clarification. So at a previous council meeting, I believe it's the last council meeting. We did bring a report forward. Asking council to reschedule the committee of adjustment meeting to six PM moving forward. They had always been both at seven PM and when we went to virtual meetings. We moved committee of adjustment with mission of council to five PM so that we could schedule them separately. So coming back to the in-person meeting, we brought a report forward suggesting that committee of adjustment be at six PM so that they. For the exact reasons you stated, so that they are separate. It was our error. We did not consult with the committee before bringing that report forward, so that's why we had a. Report on the committee committee of adjustment meeting last week. So they then passed a resolution requesting that we go back to seven PM. So if council was to defeat this motion, the existing motion is that committee of adjustment would start at six PM and it would remain that way.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll call the vote on. The motion as it is that Woodstock City Council schedule both committee of adjustment and public planning meetings at seven PM. All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, thank you. So that motion has failed. And so I'll ask for a motion to receive this as information. This would be, this is just a motion to receive this is Counselor Atchioni and a seconder. Counselor Talbot, I'll call the vote on that. All in favor to receive this this information? Thank you, that's unanimous. And one one opposed and the others are in favor. Chief Administrative Officers, no report. A Human Resources, no report. Our Services, no report. Public Works, no report. And the County of Oxford Transportation Operations and Maintenance Service Delivery Review. Motion?
I'll make a motion that Woodstock City Council receive the report regarding the County of Oxford Transportation Operations and Maintenance Service Delivery Review as information. And for that city council hereby notifies county council that endorses this current current status quo service model. Instruct city staff to work with county staff to find improvements with the current framework. And for that city council direct staff to negotiate a new agreement with county staff and incorporate improvements in efficiency and full cost recovery by this for the city. For the services provided without lowering the cost LOS and further that city council direct cities. City Council direct city staff bring back proposed agreements to city council for approval once staff has completed negotiating a satisfactory draft agreement.
Second by Counselor Atchioni. This is a quite a thorough report. Is there any questions or comments regarding this report? We have Mr. Dahan or Mr. Locke to either one would like to speak to this? I gave you a choice.
Thank you through your worship. I believe everything's in the the report. Again, this is. Our fears with this is that it lowers level of service and. The report itself even indicates that it's not comprehensive and would lead to further reports, so that's why we've recommended the. Recommendations that we have in the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Thank, Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, through to our acting mayor, if we approve this report as as is presented, this motion is presented. What sort of are the next steps then? Where do we go? Where do we go from here as far as the things that went back to the back to the county for their or county council for their decisions?
Your worship through the counselor. Yeah, the next step actually is 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 county council. It would all depend on what county council decides to do, what recommendations they decide. If they do decide to stay with this status quo, currently our agreement with county. Had expired a few years ago, two thousand and five, I think. And but we've been working on it on a year-to-year basis. If the county agrees to stick with the status quo, we would meet again with their staff to negotiate a fair and equitable agreement.
Any other questions or comments on this report? I don't see any, so I'll call the vote on this. All in favor of this this resolution? Thank you, that's unanimous. The next one, addition of clothing bin at the Enviro Depot. Could I have a motion on that? Counselor Tate?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council support the addition of a clothing donation bin that the Enviro Depot in partnership with Diabetes Canada instruct staff to begin promotion and education on the city's website, social media, and other media outlets.
I have a second on that, please. Counselor Atchioni? Are there any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Tate.
Just a comment from being down there and talking to the workers down there. I know they have a bit of an issue sometimes with people dumping stuff that they shouldn't dump. I know we have to be very cautious of the number of staff that we have, so just a little concerned. This is going to add one more thing, but we can't add staff down there, correct? Because then we'll be. Just if Mr. Locke wants to comment.
Thank you. Through your worship to the counselor's question, yes, that's correct. This. Donation bin was brought to us from the Diabetes. Canada Group and their experience elsewhere is this is pretty self-managed. It's much like the recycling areas, so. We don't see it foresee it having much staff impact timewise, but we are monitoring those situations for sure and. We look at this as a. Another addition that services the community and helps do that and it doesn't put it out. In the community where you'll get everything dropped off at it. It puts it in a spot where if there is some, you know. There's other alternatives for them to drop everything at the depot, so there shouldn't be anything that gets dropped at this location for this that would be. Say if you had it at a mall, they'll drop everything in the middle of the night versus they have the opportunity to drop things in the right bin at the depot, so that was the logic on having it there.
Counselor Atchioni?
Yeah, thank you through the chair to Mr. Locke. So is this going to go inside of the locked area that's called it then instead of outside of that area? Is that the plan?
Through your worship to the counselor's question, yes, that's correct. It'll be in the the man part of the depot, not outside.
Counselor Pedder?
Through the chair to Dan, have just a question. Did we have any conversations with Goodwill or Salvation Army or any of the other charitable organizations that might want these donations?
Through your worship to the counselor's question, we did not. The the can Diabetes Canada approached us. I'd be receptive to others as well. But they have other means by which they collect, so this was one that just gave us another option within our community and we thought it was a good idea.
Any other comments or questions? I I really think this is a great idea. Also, I know that there was used to be a. A pickup area near us when we were on Sixth Ave and I know that everything and anything got dropped off there and it became a real mess, so I think this is a great idea. To for service to be. Them and any other ones that might want this, so thank you. I'll call the vote on this. I'll call the vote on this. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. The information technology, there's nothing on that. And Special Committee and Advisory Task Force reports, we have nothing. And we have a notice of motion, councillor Tate?
Move that Woodstock City Council request report from the city solicitor regarding the city's ability to pass a bylaw prohibiting symbols associated with hate, profanity or obscenity on private property, including a review of the legalities and forcibility of other municipal bylaws related to the topic. And for that city council requests comment from the Woodstock Police Service on current enforcement capabilities, if any, with respect to symbols of hate, profanity or obscenity on private property. And for that city council requests a report from the city solicitor, providing review and comment on the City of London's graphic image delivery bylaw, P W dash fourteen adopted May third, twenty twenty two, which regulates the unsolicited delivery of graphic images to residences.
Thank you. They'll be dealing with this at the next council meeting. Thank you. We have nothing under new business and draft bylaws. Councillor Pedder?
Move by myself and seconded by councillor Schattenberg, that the following bylaws be given a first and second reading. Ninety-five thirty-one dash twenty-two, a bylaw to amend zoning by bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six dash ten is amended. Ninety-five thirty-two dash twenty-two, a bylaw to amend traffic bylaw eighty twenty-one dash zero-four is amended. Ninety-five thirty-three dash twenty-two, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eighty-six twenty-six dash ten is amended.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you. I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. Councillor Pedder, would you do the third reading, please?
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Schattenberg, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. Ninety-five thirty-one dash twenty-two, ninety-five thirty-two dash twenty-two and ninety-five thirty-three dash twenty-two.
Thank you. I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. And we'll ask for questions and address to the members of council. Start with councillor Tate.
I don't have too much. Just I noticed driving around today that the parks got their, Southside Park has their rides up and going. So I hope everybody has a good weekend, gets out, enjoys it now that people can get out and some people.
Thank you. Councillor Schattenberg?
Yeah, first of all, with extra thoughts of the long weekend reminder, the parade is on Monday at ten A M, Victoria Day Parade. I want to thank you, good work of the Special Events Department of the city of Woodstock, which probably involves so many extra people from Parks Department and Engineering because you have to close down roads and put up the rides in Southside Park, as Depp just mentioned. But but also Kristen Broadhagen from the Special Events Department and the now retired Brad Jansen for getting things to started off for for this event for Victoria Day weekend. One group I want to give recognition to personally, because I know they do a lot for operating the parade or hosting the parade is the Lions Club of Woodstock, the both councillor Accioni and myself have been members of for a long time. People don't realize though, the way things work as far as in the fairgrounds, organizing the floats and getting them sort of out on the Mackenzie Street and down Dundas Street, the amount of work the Lions Club does in that area. I want to mention that Rogers TV has taped their candidates debate for the provincial election. A uniform six-three-six hosted it. So check out the website, RogersTV dot com slash Woodstock. And be sure to check the, as I say, the local TV listings for when that'll be broadcast. And and just reminder to people that as the city of Woodstock does not have any fireworks on Victoria Day weekend, you can display your own fireworks on Monday, May twenty-third. It is one of the regulated days to allow so from dusk until eleven P M. Nice list of safety tips put out by the fire department on their Facebook page. But it's Monday, May twenty-third only for the city of Woodstock, that's Victoria Day. The reason I mention that is because there are fireworks displays put on by the Hickson Lions Club in Hickson on Sunday night and also part of Calathumpian Days in Thamesford also on Sunday night, if you're looking for fireworks nearby outside of Woodstock. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councillor Pedder?
I'd like to give a short report about the LEAF second round record in the, oh. No, I'll do that next year, I guess. That's no good. I just want to, you know, have a safe, long weekend, folks. With COVID and all the rest of it, I mean, people are finally going to get out and they're not going to be wearing masks and are going to have a good time, but just make sure it's safe. Mark, I was going to talk about the fireworks, but councillor Schadenberg took care of that. Just have a good time and be safe out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot?
When you get down this far, it's almost all been said. And that's all I was going to say was about the weekend. And I just checked the weather report. It looked really good at the beginning of the week, but it's not looking so good now. So let's keep our fingers crossed that people can get out and enjoy one of our first events since we've been under all these restrictions for two years. So just enjoy regardless of the weather.
Thank you. Councillor Accioni?
Yep, basically the same thing. Happy Victoria Day weekend, everybody. Enjoy the midway starting tonight. I hope everybody has fun, get out with the family, be safe, safe, of course. And again, enjoy a great time and looking forward to the seventy-fifth annual parade, ten A M, Monday morning. See you there.
Thank you. The bridge from the art gallery, the virtual celebration of the second annual New Impressions High School juried exhibition will take place on May the twenty-fifth, four P M. The awards will be presented along with the jurors speaking about their favorite selections. Please visit the gallery's website to register for this special presentation celebrating our city's talented youth. The gallery is thankful for the support provided by DJ Design and Heart FM. Theater Woodstock is back. Stages Senior Company is so excited to present the first play of the season, Bonnie and Clyde Musical, May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, seven thirty P M, May twenty-ninth, two P M, June second, third and fourth at seven thirty P M. This production is for suggested audience ten plus. And it's featuring a live orchestra. Tickets are available by calling five one nine, five three seven, two five eight two. When Bonnie Parker and Clyde Barrow meet their mutual cravings for excitement and fame, immediately set them on a mission to chase their dreams. Theater Woodstock has worked closely with Woodstock Police Services to discuss the themes with the cast and crew. Can't tell you more. Sounds like a production you will not want to miss. And I do have a message from the fire chief. And I know we're all excited to celebrate this weekend. The fire department would like to remind citizens that fireworks are only permitted to be set off on Monday of the long weekend, as as councillor Schattenberg has mentioned. And so please be respectful to your neighbors and limit the displays on that to that night only. Additionally, fireworks are not permitted to be set off in public spaces, including city parks, playgrounds or roadways. If there are concerns about fireworks being set off in the wrong days or on or in unapproved locations, please call the police or fire dispatch, five one nine, five three seven, twenty-three, twenty-three to report the situation. So might be it may be addressed. Now, I don't want to insult the men sitting over here. I would just like to bring to the attention for this is the first time in the history of Woodstock Council, all the seats at the front of the chambers are occupied by ladies. Thank you and have a safe and wonderful weekend. And I'll see you at the parade. Thank you. And I'll call for an adjournment. Councillor Pedder and councillor Accioni. Thank you. Oh, we better vote on this. The hall in favor. Thank you.